Because it was scheduled for that time, even though there's nobody here for it. So, at 7:30 we have a continued public hearing for 111 New Report Turnpike Artistic Landscapes, LLC Anthony Hurley is a proponent. I received a notification from Anthony Hurley and in conversations with our review engineer, Larry Graham, that I need a vote just to continue because of some modifications that they're doing on their original plan that we were so close to, as you know, coming to a point where we can do a draft decision on that. But at this point, it's been continued, and the date I'm looking at is the 20th of November. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to...
This is a continuation of the special permit on the site plan review. So if I have a motion...
I'll move to continue the public hearing until November 20.
Can I have someone who'll just write down the motion? We have a DVD, but we need at least...
7:30?
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing, well, that's the only related. We only need two motions tonight.
Okay.
I'll have a second on that. I'll second. Second by Steve, motion by Clint Pierce. Steve Cassios, second for continuation of public hearing for 111 New Report Turnpike, all in favor? All right. opposed? It's unanimous, till 7:30 on the 20th of November. Secondly, we have an informal discussion by Chip Nutter for Woodman Associates and New Report regarding institution for savings, special permit and site plan review regarding addition to the building. And we can also help them make sure that the goal is to get the application in so it can be advertised in the town comment next Friday, so the application would have to be complete and stamped in by next Wednesday, because that's when we have to get the...
David.
How do you do? Thanks, David. Just go down the bar. And all I ask is just introduce yourselves and your position.
Hi, my name is Chip Nutter, an architect and...
You want to come to the table? Do you have anything to show?
Oh, yes, I do. But this is Kim Rockt, of the institution for savings, and Charlie Ware, of Meridian What I brought is, took a shot at the complete application for modification to site plan...
Site plan review.
Site plan review and modification to an existing special permit. So if you would, I'd appreciate if you guys could take a look at these documents. I know it's quite a few, you can't look at it right away.
That's that same situation, where we really have a new special permit.
And I did bring a set of larger scale drawings, because what I really wanted to show you is the extent of what we're trying to do.
That's fine.
So could I lay them out on the table?
Sure, whatever you wish, I'll put them up.
I didn't bring an easel or anything like that.
Well, sometimes you can clip them. The only advantage of that, well, it's informal, I mean, at the public hearing we put them up so people on TV can see them. But at this point, that's not...
Yeah, that's not...
So this is the record site plan.
We have no plans right now to change footprint of the building. What our intent is, canopy over the drive-throughs, our intent is to build an addition to the building over that. So these are just the larger scale drawings that shows existing second floor with the existing canopy over the drive-through lanes. And what we'll be proposing is to build a new one-story addition on the top of that, housing three offices. We're going to be losing an office right here.
For the bathroom?
Yeah, for the bathroom, we'll be able to add a closet and a storage room, which they sorely need. This is a new roof plan, roof plan. And these, I went through, you have copies of those in your...
In our package.
Yeah. These are existing elevations, probably driven by a few times, you have a good idea what it looks like. And that's the canopy itself. And, okay, so this would be looking from away from the river, is that what's over there? There's the existing canopy, which remains the same, and our new addition on top of it. And when we get to the north elevation, this is what you see from Hadron Street, on top of the existing canopy. There's our new building with it, we took the same kind of railing, the balustrades that's sitting on top there, and we're going to move it up a little bit higher on top of it. And this will blend in with the existing building. The intent is to make it look like it was always part of the original building. And then I also have a rear elevation, they should see this from behind.
And that's such a, you built out over here?
We are.
That's my thought, so somewhere, yeah, right.
We're actually, it's, over the drive-up, there's actually just the canopy, but then on the entrance side, we actually have a second floor.
Right. And even in the other one, too, over by the Y?
The Y...
Is there a drive-through?
So there's a drive-through, but there's actually nothing above it, it's actually just a clock tower above it.
Okay.
Yeah, this has the second floor.
It's probably worth noting that even when you see two new offices, there isn't really a plan to increase the staff level. The plan is, right now, they've got people sharing offices, and they just won't be able to get people in their offices, so they're not intending to increase the staff.
Yeah, and you can see the existing office that's being taken out, that has two people in it.
That's correct.
Not only we're putting somebody else, but it's a little crowded in there. So we just wanted to get this in front of you, and take a look at the application, because they're looking for sure of what kind of language to use. There's no real, something in the zoning regulations about exactly what you call a modification to a special permit or site plan approval. So I added the word modification to the top of the application sheets for each of those, tried to cite the right sections. Charlie pointed something out about section 6.4.2 has been...
Some of the applications aren't completely up to speed. But I pointed, it's the flood section about flood plan. Actually, no, it's the section on the drive-through, the section that we originally got...
They had a drive-through.
They had a drive-through. The reason we have a special permit at all, the bank is allowed by right, the drive-through is why we have the special permit.
That's correct.
And the number that was referenced in the original is not the reference, that had changed. Also, there were two permits originally that used to be required by the selectmen.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one.
One was, this is the time to talk about that, too. One was the, what they called soil suitability, which has been deleted from the zoning completely. The other was the flood plane, which if I'm reading it right, is, has, and the selectmen did grant a permit for this for work within the established flood plane. That has now been, the permitting authority on that is now the planning board.
Right.
So...
That's correct.
I had a discussion with, so it's kind of an interesting, gee, what do we do about this permit? I had a good discussion with Kenny Wood today, who did, in everything I'm about to say, at the very end of it, he said was, "But talk to the planning board about it, and you can let them know what my opinion is." We talked about three options. One option is, the permit was originally granted by the selectmen, we could return to the selectmen and ask them to amend the permit. Another option, and Kenny said this is the option that he agreed with, was that this addition is way above the flood plane, and there's no change to the elevation on the surface. So he believes we don't need any change or any action regarding the flood plane. The third option would be to request this board amend the decision that selectmen, as the permitting authority now, would be to amend the decision...
The original special.
Yeah, the original special permit, the selectmen. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure how that really works. But again, Kenny's position was, was he didn't think any action was needed at all, but he was deferring to this board. He was saying, whatever this board wants is how we should do it. But he said you can let them know what my opinion is on that.
Because that would cut out one layer of...
It would cut out one more.
Yeah, I actually was thinking that before you even said that that was his favorite option, the middle one.
The middle, yeah.
Because you're not doing, you're not altering the flood plane at all.
Right.
Unless the flood plane is very high, in which case you're in trouble.
So, no, so I mean, that I think is the, obviously, it's the best option for the bank as well, but, so that's kind of my position on that.
Yeah, I mean, the banks...
Well, we had an opinion from that, from the town council, actually, not about this project, but about the bridges they built on Wadisfield Street, and her opinion was, if something does not result in a significant encroachment on flood plane, or alteration in terminology to use, then the board has the discretion not to require a special permit, or in this case, a modification of a special permit.
Right.
So we have to make that determination, and remember, Jane, we voted on that, that we wouldn't require a special permit.
So we could just make a request, and we could issue a finding.
Right.
And that would give Kenny some paper to...
Yeah.
Okay.
And give you some paper.
And I think in our potential decision down the road, we'll clean it up and also bring it up to date in terms of the administering authority on that. Now, you'll just have to deal with your insurance company, I'm sure you have a flight for the chance.
Absolutely.
It's pleasure. They don't give it away anymore, do they?
So it's only, it's 650 square feet, and because our rules and regs require them to, when going for a special permit, to also approve the site plan, that's why there's both...
Charlie, I mean, it's really a minimal expansion, but assuming that the bank was hiring new staff for these new offices, do you think there would be any need for additional parking, or is the parking area, that's the only question I would have.
Well, in the long run, we are proposing to come back to try to get some additional parking in the future, to be completely transparent about it. But we would like to get, and we've met with the conservation commission about possibly expanding the park around the back, and we've gotten positive feedback from, about that. But we would like to get started with this portion of the project.
That's the way to do it, was just to find...
Expanding the parking is going to take a harder look, you know, Larry's going to want to look at the drainage calculations.
Right, right.
So we're kind of looking at it to expedite the process, and we feel that the parking is, we want to do this project regardless of, regardless of the parking. So, and it's a good point that if we, you know, perhaps you could, you could put a condition on that there's no, that there be no increase in the, you know, staffing, current staffing levels, and that would protect you against... And then we come, hopefully, later in December, we'll be in with the expansion of the parking lot, and then, but like I said, that's going to be a little bit longer, because Larry's going to get a bite at that apple, because we'll have to go through the hydrology again.
Yeah, I've talked to Larry, because the hydrology, everything works now, it would have to be reconfigured.
Right.
There's some pretty complex drainage.
Correct.
Grating, you know, and it works.
Yeah.
Except for the most extreme conditions, even in an area that you wouldn't anticipate to work, because I remember when the restaurant was there, I remember, I guess I remember that even flooded one time.
Mother's Day. Mother's Day. And actually, what I did, one of the...
Whatever you did, it works now.
Well, you know, it's funny, because sometimes just common sense kicks in. We could do all kinds of calculations all day long, but at the end of the day, what we did was, is at the height of the Mother's Day storm, and the water, you know, the culvert completely blocked, you know, there was nothing flooding. I don't know if you know the story of how the DPW guys went down and dove in and started pulling out, and that, what did it run over the road for, three or four days? It was unbelievable, I never saw anything like it. And the road was closed for three or four days, and the DPW guys that were working, that were diving on, down in Ipswich, on the Cho Bridge, got sick of driving around it, so they finally just dove in and started pulling material out of the pot, and I forget, there was a guy down there pumping, and it was just, it was unbelievable. We went down and measured the high water, and I designed the bank to be a foot above the high water. So, you know, sometimes you can do all the calcs in the world, the calcs...
That was the time to measure.
That was the time to measure. You know, my calculations were telling me that the building could have been much lower.
Right.
You know, because it was, they were back-to-back. Mother's Day storms, literally back-to-back 100-year storms, two days in a row.
There's been a lot of discussions, you know, this week about airing on the conservative side.
Right. So there was just a lot of common sense that went into where that elevation is now. So the water's got to come up a long ways in order for this building to ever flood. I feel, as the engineer, I feel pretty good about it.
And it would probably be six months from today, if, before this thing would be completed. Talking of five-month construction, so we're way down the line, there's plenty of time to work on those other issues.
Well, if you don't mind that condition, then...
No, I think we could...
I might just be concerned if, for example, Larry were to say, gee, the parking is already tight.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if it is or not, but if it is, you know, maybe we should add a few spaces, but if you're fine with that condition.
We're planning on adding, like, what, I think, what are we, up to 10 or 12?
Right.
Something along those lines. But we're planning on adding, with the, around the back, we're thinking of, because you only have parking on the inside, we're thinking about putting parking on the outside and adjusting the drainage. We've already kind of done some preliminary numbers on it, and like I said, we ran it. I was more concerned with the, I didn't think this board would be too concerned with adding it, you know, as long as the drainage worked. I was more concerned with the conservation commission, because that's a riverfront area, and it's a very complicated kind of permitting piece. So I did run it by them, and they were pointed, we had a very good discussion, they said, well, what about this way, you know, we went around and around and around. At the end of the day, I think they were convinced that we didn't really have too many options, other than expanding in that direction. And they gave us, they obviously haven't approved it yet, but they gave us the blessings that said that, you know, if you can come in and show that the numbers work on the hydrology, that they would be inclined to issue it.
Yeah, so we're potentially modifying the site, the special permit, and reviewing the site plan, and I guess the premise here is that there's no change, there's no change at this time to the site plan whatsoever, not even one tiny one.
You could issue an amendment that just says that you approve it, subject to not increase on the, in the...
Which, what you have in here, you have the existing condition, I think you have eight employees and 10 customers, potential customers that the bank wants, so you have 18 spaces.
But I just want to be clear, as far as that, the eight and the 10 of the parking spaces, we currently have, it's actually on the new application, we currently have 12 employees there. So I know at the original application, it stated that we expected to have eight, back when we opened in 2007, but we have 12 now.
Is there, are they there all the time, or is there overlapping?
There's a couple that actually overlap, and the commercial lending department comes and goes, because they do a lot of, you know, out-of-office...
So there's not 12 people that are in there all the time?
Correct, correct.
So I think that's where we got to.
That's kind of the net, the half is, the average is probably...
Well, yeah, that's, that was one of the questions about the application, because it's under parking spaces. We start out total number, 18, then it says employees, there were eight, customers, 10, so we put down the same numbers, because there still are eight employee spaces.
And I think these kind of waivers work better in places where, you know, the average stay time in a bank parking space is not very long. Only a few might be there for a long time, or fill out a working customer service, but we just say the average person goes in there, doesn't hang out.
No.
So there's a lot of turnover, I mean, the turnover frequency...
Correct.
Which makes those kind of sites work, other certain retailers, yeah.
The banks should come and go.
If it was strictly office or retail, it may not work.
You might hang around if you get a loan.
A residential, we went through this down the center of town, remember, we were discussing the mix.
Doctors' offices.
Yeah, the mix with residential.
Dentists are good, doctors...
They never run time.
People are, Chris, does anybody have any questions on the application? And you still have time, I mean, people can, you know, I guess, email me separately, I guess, I shouldn't want to do it that way, but if you have, if you have a planner. Give any comments into the selectmen.
Now, is there anything we can do to help with that?
The selectmen are doing, they're pretty good.
Okay.
They're the point people now, and Amy, and they're getting right back to me, they're being like a surrogate planner type people.
So they're all set, you know?
They know, you give them anything, you ask, and of course, yeah, it gets right to me.
And then I guess the next thing is, if you meet on the 20th, and the board is inclined to approve, is we'd like to try to get a decision as quickly as possible. Can we help craft that, or anything like that? I mean, the decision's going to be pretty straight ahead.
This is pretty straightforward.
Right.
Does anybody see any, like, that's why we're here tonight, so...
Well, Larry, you're right.
Yeah, in addition, in speaking with Ken Ward, I asked him, I said, would the bank be able, would you be able to start reviewing the permit drawings during the appeal period if it was approved? And even if you had, were, had the chance to approve them, would we be able to start construction if it was still during the appeal period? He said, "Well, I'll just leave that up to the planning board, you should have that discussion moved down."
It's usually at your own peril.
It's at your own peril, yeah.
Only because if anybody does appeal, then obviously, but...
But even if we could just get the drawings into him to start his review, it may take him a few weeks to...
Yeah, it takes a few weeks.
He's willing to do that, if we, we say, if we close it, he'll take a drawing, if we close it.
Oh, great.
The point is, we'd love to walk away with a decision on the 20th, if possible. Obviously, we're not going to ask for it, if you can't do it.
I think we could probably vote on it, but whether you get a written decision or not, I mean...
I mean, if Larry, when you get your application, and we'll have to get it right to Larry, and just...
And we could even, we may be so bold, we could craft a draft decision.
You can do that, Larry, that's fine.
And let Larry, you know, do some of Larry's work for him, and then, you know...
I don't have a problem with that, it happens in other towns, and you know it does.
No, it happens all the time.
It happens, and without having a planner in place, that's fine.
And it should be a pretty straightforward decision, it can reference the initial decision, and just introduce...
As long as we have it, you know, well enough that...
Yeah, we can't have it that night.
No, 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 I was suggesting, I was going to suggest maybe filing it with the application, you know?
I know, I know.
Top path for something very, very old.
All right, next order of business. No, it'll be helpful, Charlie, that's fine. Does anybody have any problem with that?
File a draft with the application.
So there's nothing you need us to do as far as the legal notice, or the abutters list, or anything like that?
No, I'll get the legal notice written up as soon as I have the application.
And I don't have any problem architecturally, you know, canopies are tough to begin with, as you well know, to get them to look good, so this is no worse than the canopy that's there on the building.
Yeah, that's...
Bank canopies are difficult.
It's not a bad-looking canopy, as it is. This is more like the canopy that we ended up with in the Toxfield branch, there's a destruction...
Chip Davis is an architect this way.
Oh, no, thank you.
I've done a few banks, and the canopy is the most difficult part of the whole process.
That wasn't my canopy. This is my solution to their canopy.
You're going to claim it, how are you going to claim it?
This was the original, and it was planning ahead or somebody else.
Yeah, what were they, Royal Design.
Yeah, but, you know, they had copper on top of the, you know, the baluster, baluster posts and stuff like that.
Well, it's already Wednesday, Charlie, I would shoot to get it in on Monday.
Well, we'll shoot to get it in.
I'll tell you why, only because I want to be able to get...
Yeah, to give you guys some breathing room, that's fine.
That's why I got this whole thing...
To help you out, you get the abutters, it's like, you know...
Right, and you will, one hand washes.
I need to send out the notices.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Nine years to get the ad in, two consecutive Fridays.
Yeah, I think so.
Two consecutive Fridays is next Friday, and then the one after that, and the 20th is, would be the meeting.
That's right.
Because it has to be in two consecutive weeks.
Well, this is ours, too.
If they, so if they miss next Friday, obviously, then they'd be put off to a meeting in December sometimes, so that's, so Monday would be good, you know, Monday, if Monday afternoon, just sort of get the, the thing written up, because I really need to get it to them on Wednesday.
It's a language in this stuff, is...
Yeah, I think we get it on Friday.
Anybody have a problem?
It's okay, I hate to put you on the spot, you know, to look at this stuff.
No, it's fine, I, I mean, there's like two phases here, and this is something that, you know, Ken's doing his job, we just wanted to do our job to help you out.
Ken's great, he directs us right to this board, and gets good...
So we would do the standard application, I don't even know how many copies that is, is that nine copies?
Nine.
Nine of these copies?
No, we don't need nine anymore, do we? One, two, three, four, five, six.
Well, I thought it gets...
Just to go...
All because of the police department, yeah. But we usually give them, sometimes we give them the small ones. You don't need all the big ones.
I think the small ones are fine. Especially for this, yeah.
Do they need, do they need even all big ones for us?
I just brought these because it's much easier to see, but I don't...
Because we're going towards...
Bring those to the meeting.
How many do you have?
So how many meetings do we have?
We need, what do you, these two, one, three?
You need three sets of large drawings.
The rest can just be...
The rest can be small.
Okay, so I'll do the complete package, nine, and then I'll have three complete sets of these.
We'll make sure the fire, we'll make sure the fire, police, highway, they'll get them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
We do, yeah, we do disseminate them.
I took the opportunity to print on both sides of the page there, too, because I know how many of these things just get tossed.
No, I'm trying to say, if I have, people used to do all big plans, I won't even go there.
If that's okay.
Sometimes we don't look at the backside of the page.
Anybody have a problem with both sides?
It's only on the small sheets on the front, that's okay.
All right, so three big ones, yeah.
The drawings, you like to compare, you know?
Then I could do the drawings.
Single.
Single, yes.
Highway, fire, water, police.
Final camera.
Selectmen, so, any other questions or to the...
Just to scale.
Just to scale?
Because you may have some people who...
Are going to scale off of these things?
There's a bar scale on them.
Yeah, I could have a graphic scale on mine, my 11 by 17 should come out...
Eight to scale, right?
At 50%, yeah, because that's the way I've sized my 24 by 36, but it doesn't always work out perfect.
Shop talk.
I know, I got a big machine that sometimes you can't figure it out.
Any other question? No, it's informed, it's...
Informed, okay.
I just want to make sure, they want to know if their application is all right to file. They already have got the abutters list, we'll get stamped, you know, the selectmen have... are very helpful, help us get the abutters notices out and it's just that these are deadlines, it has to be me.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
No sorry.
No worries.
That's all.
We're all spoiled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bye Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glad to hear it, easy ride out of Boston.
I was at your office the other day, Charles.
Were you?
Yeah. Somebody left a, a field book, they asked it in the parking garage in Boston, and Sarah found it.
That was good.
And she's trying to study the power plant location for her thesis and so.
Nice.
Rick said, oh, we're working on it.
Yeah, we did some work on it, yeah. So have her come by?
Dawn, I met him in the lobby, he was coming back from Providence or something, and he said, uh, I'll drop a note over to the COO or footman.
Yeah, yeah.
That plan would be fantastic. He's getting a master's in landscape architecture, studying big stuff. Little flower garden. Good to see you.
You too, take care.
And, uh, to amend format. And we asked them for a status in the work. Their goal is to, we can do this one now, complete with the signs, we need three signatures. Their goal is to get the road approved by the two thousand and fifteen spring meeting.
Who is that?
This is Wild Passures, the state subdivision. As you know, Regnati, their council has prepared this blanket, basically it's just amending the formats, which was the original tripartite agreement, and then also release of one covenant. Lots one, two, and thirty remain subject to a covenant, if the covenant is secured by a tripartite, my client would like the covenant released. Lots one and two have existing homes in them and were included in the covenant because the driveway's fronted out of the new road. My client anticipates commencing construction on lot thirty in early two thousand and fifteen, accordingly encloses releasing covenant. The reason why I don't have a problem with it, because I'm concerned, they want two years, but I don't want this for the sake of the neighbors, you know, the abutters, to have this project drag on for five years.
Right, where they only have three lots to finish.
Right. I would like, if they are, can keep going and get some of them sold and they can keep this project and keep the momentum, then it can be a very good project, because we spent a lot of time coming up with, what, a decent plan on this one.
Right.
So that's why the work we need to begin.
Jim actually called me, Jim Dorilakis, and he, he wants to actually get it approved next fall, the fall time meeting, and I said, well, we don't always have a fall time meeting, so I think he put, in here, he put the following spring.
Right, that's what the lawyer thought realistically, she was being realistic, he was being a little bit optimistic. Because, as you know, you have to have your stuff months, months ahead, you know.
We've never had an issue with this development at all, it's just that they got caught up in the bad economy, you know, they, they were approved just as the economy was heading south.
Tough to get funding, I mean, just if you wanted to finance, what you need to do, you know.
And so, you know, we have, we have adequate money and, but I don't think we're ever going to need it because behind this paper.
Is this, is this what they're holding right here, this amount here, the three forty-six?
Yeah. It seems like that. And he claims he's done some work, but even though he's done some significant work, he's not asking for a reduction of the amount.
Right.
Well, I'm, you know how, you know, my son is on that, a whole lot of them. Why is it he is caught? That's not his dog, you know? That's how I feel. And we just get caught, and somebody just goes out.
That's the bond.
But, but actually, um.
I just want to make sure I have the original.
Under the MGL, once you get inadequate, correct, part time, you're supposed to release the covenants. That's all, the covenants is only one form of security, I mean, but we've, we've tried to have two forms.
The covenant one, which I didn't think I gave you a copy of that one, but, uh, the covenant language. Yeah, the covenant release, the covenant, um, this typical covenant language, do you have any problem with the covenant language?
No.
It's pretty legalese as we know, but basically, we don't, we're not, as Cliff was saying, not designed to encumber the lots, you know.
Right.
Like I said, I thought we spent a ton of time on this. Well, I need three, here's the original, um, we're signing it, I already made arrangements to get a notarized, that, they're right on the way to work for me, so, I need, everybody's here, so, she has no trouble with having a line, if all five of us want to do it, and so there's just, there's one copy of it, and then, that's, this is from my notes, so forget that one, and then there's only one other one here, that's the covenant.
Combined vote or a single vote?
Combined, combined.
All right, so I'll move that we grant the extension of the tripartite.
Well, say which date, right. Till November first, two thousand and fifteen.
Right, and the release of the remaining three blocks under covenant.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by David. All is in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And it already has been, the original came, was notarized, not ready by. This is the originals that need to be signed, so.
This is, you're going to have to get this off the table.
It's game time, eight thirty?
Eight oh seven, but they don't start.
There's pitch, I like the game started at seven thirty, because game's over like about eleven fifty.
I am sure I'm asleep, but, yeah, I was sitting, eating lunch, and I fell asleep, you know.
You know, they were, they had a big talk show about that. Seventeen percent more accidents.
That was on, on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fighting with each other. Crime rate way up.
But nothing affected the west coast. Zero.
You know, that's, that's absolutely.
Kirk, thanks to your panel.
I think you get a better show watching TV anyway, because you'd be missing the party, but.
There should be, I'll argue it's, it's not a topic soon.
Guess what?
The prices of tickets. What, for what? Well, serious, people paid.
It was on secondary market.
Yeah, the average size is two grand a ticket, even for.
Crafty standing room.
Season ticket, oh, this, you could, there weren't, you could have got it season tickets thing early in the spring, there was nobody, the place wasn't even full.
Yeah, well, there were, there were some tickets for sale now, there's been people in line for a day now.
Nineteen eighteen, the last time we had a World Series, there was three hundred people in the stands.
No, what are you saying last time?
The last time they had a World Series in Denver, at the end of it, three hundred people. Baseball was not a big deal back in nineteen eighteen and there was a war going on.
So just go with that paper I just gave you. There's only one, everybody else has to sign that one. Oh, here it comes.
I thought I should sign that because I was on that project.
You were the original signatory, on this format, see.
I'd have to sign that one.
There's only three of us.
Is that for the, what's that?
Yeah, the original.
Must we sign this one too?
You remember, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
Cliff, you, you, Cliff, did you sign this tonight or what?
I guess I did.
Come on, man, just sign the original. All right, I have everybody's, I have everybody's here.
It's been a long day.
Yeah, you have to go back to work. Hey, you going to get your back day?
Yeah.
We're all good. The government gave you vacation?
Yes, definitely.
This one, 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 this[1680.12]
Special change special permit to site plan modification, and then again on the third line of that paragraph, and then again on the second to the last line.
Which one?
The second to the last line of the final paragraph. Has to be changed three times.
Ask the motion of.
In the final paragraph?
Bryant asked for a motion.
Okay, I guess that's okay.
That's fine. Bryant motions to hold a public hearing for the market basket special permits, record.
But, second to the last.
No, not for the market basket, that's wrong. Who wrote that, maybe? For the, for the modification.
Yeah, right, that's, it is, it should be modification, site, site plan modification should be.
For the site plan modifications. The modification of the market basket special permit and site plan and special permit, because they went together at that time.
Yeah, it's fine, and then the second to the last line, it said a special permit modification should be site plan modification. And, I don't know if I should get too upset about this, but in the first full paragraph, talking about something I said, and it says that I ruminated. Kind of strange. Maybe true, I don't know, kind of strange.
Sounds like a rowley thing.
So, I would say, just put it, put it in neutral terms and say.
You know, questioned or stated?
Stated, that the planning board must have, and it should be must have been aware of the location, oh, I guess were aware. And instead of knew that the trees would have to be taken down, maybe better to say should have known that the trees would have to be taken down, I don't know, it's not a big deal. It's been like the word ruminate.
Yeah, I know.
No, not knew, in that, no, stated, in that trees, you know what I mean? Know is redundant too, you just put stated, and keep, and that trees would have to be taken down.
No, they got vented.
Right.
Katrina put that, put that?
Did she hear the word ruminate?
I'll have to bring that up with our next public speaker.
No, also.
Got that in there. Excuse me, boy out, huh? As he usually does, you know?
That's it, Cliff?
That's all I have.
Nothing on the last page?
No, no, there was another thing in there, like, you use the word certain, certain site plan modifications in certain cases, I mean, that's like, that's like the government, that's like, you know, that's like hearing, that's like a press conference, you know? Only listen in on certain cases and certain subjects. Any other comments on those?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as modified.
And I will have to, I'll get on the computer and look it in, because I have them on draft, so. Unless anyone else wants to do it.
No.
I can't say what I've already done, but.
I've seconded.
All is in favor?
I mean, I'll do it, but it will be a while before I do it.
That's fine. If I'm doing the notary and all the other running around, you can do this.
You did make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second by David.
I don't want to.
All is in favor, approve in the minutes where the changes as discussed.
It'll be, it'll be a couple of weeks, but.
We have a couple of weeks.
Next.
Thank you, Cliff. Lastly, we, we do have, and people can contact me, two, myself and another planning board member, was it three? No, can we have three?
Usually.
For the interviews for the, we can have three, yeah.
It's a quorum, you don't have to hold a.
No, I think, we have one personnel, and then Debbie, who was a personnel, one personnel, one person, a committee member, and then Debbie, who was like personnel officer in the town. I thought you wanted five on the committee, so I had three planning board members.
Well, that would be a quorum.
This suggests to interview people, to narrow it down?
I think so.
Last time, I'll volunteer, I'll be telling.
Did we have three last time? I'm saying, would you have to post the notices in the meeting?
Well, I'll contact, that's the kind of thing we're thinking about, have a committee, and basically what we're doing is taking right now the fifteen people, they do have experience, we have a number of people who have met the qualifications in the, our job description, that was advertised. Municipal planning experience of three to four years, a master preferred, and we did have a number of potentially qualifying candidates that we need to narrow down through this committee process, and then, after we narrow it down, then of course we would have that public meeting, hopefully within, hopefully within a month, you know, a month or by, by December, have, be able to interview and.
So you interview the public meeting?
And we have the final three.
Really?
Whatever's front, yeah, activate, yeah, you do.
Individually, or do they all get to sit here?
Individually.
Individually, okay.
And then we'll actually, remember, then we have the process, we actually recommend, and we have our, we rate them, and as you know, like last time, and then we.
So all three of them are done in one night?
No, what we need, the committee that I'm asking for, and I'll contact, you can just email me if you're interested in, as chairman, I'll make sure I have, whether it was two or three, but just if you're interested at all, just email me, I don't, I don't know.
I'm interested.
Because I can, if everyone is, then I'll have to choose, so, but, which is good, because it's very interesting, I mean, I'll be looking, I would prefer that, when we have the committee, that, of course, anyone can, I think, look at the resumes, but I think it should be through the committee in a formalized process, you know? Because.
It is.
Because it is personnel matters, but.
Because you know what you're looking for, what, you know, what I would be, because I'm still a little green as far as I'm concerned.
No, but I think, remember, the full board is gonna take, this is just to narrow down the field.
You'll see the final.
Right.
I would trust Cliff and David.
And I expect ladies on there.
I have to deal with a lot of players.
Alright, so, Cliff, you are interested in jeans potentially, so, anyways, I'll set that, I'll set that up, I'll coordinate it, so it has to be done with people who can potentially meet during a business day.
I can do it.
I think that's when, you know, Debbie and the personnel committee are available, that's it.
Cliff, just for the audience out there, what hap, if somebody's looking for the town planner right now, where should they go?
Where?
They go to see the selectmen's secretary, right?
Right, administrative.
Doreen or Debbie.
Or Amy.
Amy, yeah, okay.
They're coordinating, and they are forwarding, and collecting all the mail, and collecting all of them.
Have applications been cut off, I mean, there's no.
It's still filled, I mean, I think that's part of the committee, I mean, it is really, really still open, but to urge people, you know, I don't think they would be turned away if they were truly qualified. But, I think it's important on these kind of things to have the best candidates really think about it, and realize there is a deadline, and this was advertised thankfully by, I mean, I have to thank, you know, select, I mean, town administrator advertised it, and all the professional databases and online municipal services, so, it could help pretty wide.
Just Google Rowley Town Planner, and you'll end up.
Yeah, so, in that case, I think that's why we had, you know, you can look, we had a fairly, a fairly good response, you know? And then I just have, there's no bill payables, no expense report, the next meeting is twentieth of November, and motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Zach, can I just? You can have this signed.
Thank you, thanks Nate.